All right. Welcome, everyone, to the, what is this? January 30th Special City Council Meeting for the Placerville City Council. Will everyone rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thanks for joining us. Do roll call.
Councilmember Gottberg.
Here.
Councilmember Saragosa.
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Here.
Vice Mayor Clarici.
Here.
Mayor No.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to number three. Announcements and presentations to the public. Doesn't appear to have any. Move to number four, adoption of the agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Gottberg.
Here.
Councilmember Saragosa.
Here, aye, 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 here.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici.
Aye.
Mayor No.
Aye.
You said here, didn't you? Okay.
That's what threw me off, I think.
Wait, we have to share our microphones and pay attention. Okay, number five. Review future major project needs and discuss options to fund those projects. Mr. Morris.
All right. Can you hear me? Is that working? Good, okay. All right, thank you, Mayor and Council, and staff and public for being here tonight. We, as you know, over the past, at least, well, year and a half, two years now, we have been working on, we did the feasibility study for our public safety building. And we've done, we've got, made a lot of progress. We've got a lot of things done. But one of the main factors still out there that's kind of that holding us back is how are we going to actually fund this? And that's, small details, thank you. So, and we've, we've looked into several options and we've explored options that, you know, that might could work. Bottom line is, most of those are, you think about grants and loans, most of those that are available are loans rather than grants. And if you're going to do a loan, obviously, you have to have money to pay it back. And when you're talking about the numbers that we're talking about with our public safety building, that's, that's a big number on an annual basis that you're, you're going to be up against. So what we wanted to do tonight, what we put together, I will state right up front that this is just throwing out, you know, everything and seeing if anything sticks. We will present several things here, and I want to state that there, this does not just include the public safety building. As we got into this, we started talking about, you know, we have a lot of needs in the city. And is there more that we want to expand on, that we want to look into, that maybe we consider in addition to the public safety building? Maybe, maybe not. So we'll present some of those things for your consideration. And then we'll talk about some funding options for those. And then, please, along the way, you have questions, stop me anywhere and we can ask questions as we go. Do want to emphasize that we, we are recording this, so remember that. And also that we, with, with this setup that we had, have tonight, we wanted to make this more conversational rather than as we have a regular council meeting. And that's why we are where we are down here on the floor rather than the council sitting up on the dais tonight. We want to be able to have that conversation back and forth with you in terms of what your needs are, what you see the needs are of the community, and what option we might have. We also want to hear from the public. We have a few in the, in our audience tonight. We want to hear from them. Want to emphasize that when we get to taking public comments, we have this microphone, actually, all your microphones, you can pick up and move to somebody that's speaking. But please make sure you're speaking to a microphone because, again, we are recording and broadcasting this live, so, so that the public can hear when we get to that. So with that, if there's any, unless there's any other questions, we'll go ahead and start with this PowerPoint presentation. Maybe? Oh, there we go, it worked, good. Let me know if, if we need to turn out lights to see this. I think maybe it's okay, but let me know if it looks better with it. So, as far as project lists, these are some items that we put together as a staff. And again, we can cross any of these off along the way. These are just some that we felt were somewhat of a high priority for us. And you can see, public safety building, I'll emphasize, that one's at the top of the list for us in terms of this discussion. Other items that are out there, though, are our unfunded pension liability that you're aware of. And we'll, we'll, we'll go into each one of these items a little bit after I go through these. Measure J and keeping up with salaries, we'll talk about that a little bit. Measure J was adopted in 1998, right, Dave? And the whole purpose was to help us be competitive with our public safety salaries. The thought was that it would keep up, sales tax would keep up with, with the salaries and the growth, and it, it has not. The last several years, it will show that result and how it has not. Parking trail maintenance is a constant factor for us, trying to keep up with that. We, we would love to have funding to improve those and do, make those a little bit better than they are, and to invite both for our citizens and visitors who come to our community. Town hall remodel, where we are here, as you know, we've, we've approved a little bit of money for some things. Audio video system that you see is now up and running. Most of the bugs worked out that we had early on. And, but if you go around and, and look at the outside of this building, you'll see that it's, it's old. It's got some, a lot of wear and tear. You look at the, I call them the rafters, but the, on the side of the building over here are twisted. There are some, the plaster on the pillars out here, that there's some problem with. We have put some money in the budget for that, to improve that specific one. But things like, very likely in the few, near future, we could need a new roof on this building. It's been a long time since we've done it. And then even that discussion, you'll see, that I put in here is, you know, perhaps a full remodel of this building to make it a true council chamber slash community center is what potentially it could be. So we'll, we'll talk about that a little bit. And then the last one we put on here is our parking garage. We know that there's some maintenance needs to be done with that, and we'll talk about that as we, as we go through this. Before I move on, I'll just ask a question. Are there any others that you were thinking of, real quickly, that you want to add to this list that we could, that we would discuss during this?
It just seems obvious. We should talk about the cemeteries and the ketchup and mustard building, our historical assets.
Yeah. And, and I will say that when, if you look at the spreadsheet that I prepared that was in here for, for pension funding, those two projects are actually on that spreadsheet. I put them in that second tier. I put these in the first tier and, and those in the second tier. But there are a number of other projects, like you say, such as the cemeteries and the old historic city hall that are concerns and whether or not we can get where we need to be with them, so. Anything else? Anybody want to mention at this point? Okay, let's go. I don't know. All right, just, just quickly, you have a copy of the feasibility study that goes through some of the reasons why we're going through getting, why we need a new public safety building. So this is just kind of a review of that. I'm not going to go into it a lot, but just to go through these, and if there's any questions, I'll, I'm going to throw them at Joe and Tim. But the, the current site cannot meet the needs of both police and fire. The feasibility study looked at that, said, could we stay on the site where we are and make that work? And no, it does not work. Could possibly the need, meet the needs of just police, but that would kind of just solve half of the problem that we have. Building 78 is not appropriate for current day police operation, lacks safety features to protect the public and employees, built for a smaller population. It was built in 78 for a population at that time of 6,700. Now we have over 11,000, so not quite half, but, or, but close. Narrow hallways, restricted workspaces, small lobby, and lack of adequate storage. And then one of the big ones, as you know, in the past, no female locker rooms. We have modified and made arrangements for that, so they do have sort of, correct, chief, at this point, so. But it's not, still not the ideal situation for that, so work could be done there. Any questions on that one? Again, this is kind of a review. Fire station, and Tim could speak to this better than I could, but I, I think the, the two pictures here kind of tell the story, if you look at those. This was building 51, as a volunteer fire department, that tells you something. Interior walls can't be moved because they're all load bearing, so you can't make, do different things you'd like to do in there. Lack of appropriate living quarters, original design did not have showers, not appropriate for the larger apparatus. They have to back in, and when they park in the front, it blocks pedestrian traffic along there. Station 25 lacks the necessary spaces and layout to provide adequate mitigation exposure reductions to meet current standards, as well as workstations for firefighters. So, that covered okay, Tim? Just a real quick summary of, there's a lot more detail in the feasibility study if you would like to look at that. So that kind of outlines for the public safety building. As you recall, we went through the feasibility study, which shows that doing a joint facility, there are advantages to that. There is a, if you, like, if you, in the cost summary there, it shows the cost savings. If you were to go to, it's on page 58 in the report, shows that the cost of doing a joint facility, and we're going with the low number for this, I want to emphasize that too, the numbers I've used is the lower end of the range, 43 million, where if you built a joint facility, it would be 49 million, or, excuse me, separate facilities, two separate facilities, estimated cost would be 49 million. So you can see there's about a $6 million savings overall by building a joint facility. Questions on that, anybody? Mayor, you have a question from the public behind you.
Thank you.
From Sue Rodman.
Is your savings in operations? The $6 million that you would save, is that in operations or just in facility construction?
We, I'll let Joe and Tim speak to that. I'm not sure there would be savings in operations, or maybe some, because there are some of the facilities that would be joint use, but Tim and Joe, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, the $6 million represented in the report is a savings of the construction of the facility. So it's the actual box.
Okay, so the brick and mortar.
Brick and mortar.
Not, doesn't, doesn't, doesn't talk about operations in that.
We, we've taken a stab at trying to estimate what cost savings would be, and there would be some, mostly at the command and administrative level. So that's where you, you run into some of the significant savings as far as personnel.
Not expected those would be particularly large, though.
No.
No.
Not, not to make a significant blip.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Next is the pension unfunded liability, and I'll just run through this quickly, and then if you have questions, I'm going to turn it over to Dave because he's the expert on this one. Our current unfunded liability is 25 million, 11,006 dollars. 25 million, we'll put it that way. The, our, our annual payment is almost 2 million, 1.99 million dollars. As you recall, a couple of years ago, we started contributing 1% of payroll each year to try to, try to start working away at that, but that $75,000 doesn't cut a whole lot into that 25 million. And then this current year, 2023, we added an additional one-time payment. We had a good year last year, and our budget was looking fairly well, so we contributed an additional 500,000 that year. And the city's funding ratio right now, ooh, funding ration, I got that wrong, funding ratio is 63.45%. So, questions on that item, anyone?
I should know the answers. So the annual payment, does, the annual payment is just what we would, if there was no unfunded liability, there was zero, the annual payment would just be our normal PERS payment, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then we pay down a smallish amount. But that number, 25 million, goes up and down depending on how, well, PERS is the masters of the universe, so given the end of this last calendar year, it was probably pretty good because the markets, to the degree that they're in, in the markets and the like, did well. But if you have a year where the markets are down, that number could actually get larger.
That's correct.
Okay. And that, not to put too fine a point on it, that number will, could go to zero sort of organically through investment and, you know, stuff. But that number will go to zero, in theory, when the last person stops collecting their retirement. Hold on, let, let, that, back, don't, don't answer the question back there. How does this number go to zero?
A little more complicated than that, but I, I understand, you know, the, the thought.
Yeah.
And so, first of all, that 25 million is based on evaluation.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is based on certain assumptions when people will retire.
Life expectancy, blah, 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 yada, yada.
How long they'll live, those sort of things.
Yeah.
So, but yeah, improved investment return helps, improved performance, if you will.
Right.
Retirees and, but yeah, I mean, basically, over 20 years, you're going to have to pay that $2 million, and it's going to go up and down.
Okay.
But it's probably going to, that dollar amount's going to continue to grow.
Okay.
For a certain period of time.
All right. Because I'm, I'm not sure the public underst, I mean, I don't understand it. I'm not sure the public understands that number at all. I mean, or in most of the time. Okay. What is the, what is 63.45%? What is, you know, city's funding, what does that mean?
Yeah. So basically, what that's saying is that we're funded 63%, so if we had to pay out
Well, okay.
Today.
Everybody.
All costs, everybody.
We don't, we'd be a third short.
Pay 63% of them, the other 37% would take a haircut.
Oh, I see. So like, if you were one of those cities or districts that decided to leave PERS?
We would have to backfill that 37%.
Okay. Thank you.
And, you know, we could go into more detail on this, but we, we have, we have other things that are, are good that are happening, with, you know, the new PERS rules, that new employees coming on are, are at a different tier. And all of that benefits us in the long run in terms of that retirement requirement, so.
Dave, I have a question. Where are we in terms of the, the 63.45% ratio? Where are we relative to other municipalities in terms of, I mean, are we worse off? You know, in the middle of the pack? You know, where, kind of where we are health-wise from a, from a funding perspective?
Now, that's a great question, because we're in a risk pool, meaning because we have less than 100 employees, we're pooled together with other agencies that are less than 100. And on average, it's, I would say, when you, we have six plans, so when you combine all those plans together, you're probably, on average, about 68 to 70%. So we're slightly below average. Yeah.
Anything else? All right, let's, let's move on. Measure J and police services, I mentioned a little bit about this. Measure J is a quarter cent sales tax, was adopted in 1998 to supplement police salaries. And again, the assumption was that the growth in sales tax would keep up with salary growth over the years, and it has not. You can see in recent years, this current year, we're projecting a little over 400,000 will need to be contributed to keep Measure J whole. 60,000 is all it was in two, in 2023. 2022 was a good year. We not, didn't have to contribute that year, and then 2021, 196,000. So, again, very important. We, we saw a little bit, we took some action recently to shore it up a little bit and, and do our best to maintain and retain our employees. And I think that was a good move, and it's helping, but it's not something that we can just say, okay, we're done now. It's going to continue to go on for future years. We'll have to be aware of that and looking at ways to keep those salaries where they need to be in order to avoid losing people, so. Questions, comments on that one? Okay. Parking trail maintenance, I didn't go into a lot of detail on this one, but if you go out and walk our parks, or walk our trails, you can, you can pretty much pick out what, what we're looking at, what we're going through. I put just a few things here. Restrooms at Lyons Park could use some work, especially the, the upper restroom that's in pretty poor shape. Irrigation systems, as you recall, you just put 137,000 this current year to do the irrigation system at Lyons Park. And we're having some discussions about that, about what we're actually going to do. You approved the design of, of the irrigation system for the whole thing, but we are having discussions about, because another big need we have is fixing the drainage and the, the infills of those softball fields if we want to continue with those. So just another piece of that. The trails, again, if you look at those, if you go out on our trails, you'll see that there's needs. And as we go forward, those needs only, only increase in terms of redoing and refer, resurfacing those and et cetera. The Lyons Park parking lot, for a long time, has been in need of resurfacing. It's been there, been overdue. And then I just threw on here, Lumsen Park improvements. Lumsen has gone downhill quite a bit over the last few years, and looking at improving it, or we've talked about maybe doing something else with it, eliminating it possibly. So there's, there's lots of questions about that, about what can do, what we could do, so. Other questions, comments on parks and trails? Okay. Town hall, I talked about this one a little bit. We've put some money into, into town hall in terms of the audio visual, plaster for the pillars out front, carpet, et cetera, that we're, is in the budget, and we will be getting that, that done. Mentioned the twisting of the rafters on the outside, audio video system. More work to be done, perhaps full remodel to make the facility more functional, perhaps to operate as a community center in the future could be an option, so. Questions, comments on that one? Okay, good. Parking garage. Our parking garage is old, has a lot of wear and tear, and there's a few things that we need to be aware of. One of them in particular is the top floor of that because it's not protected, is required to be resurfaced, have a refinish put on it every so often. It's been many, many years, and it's probably due to be done, and it's not, it's not a cheap process to do. So just need to be aware of that. Elevator to meet ADA standards, we're, we're eventually going to have to look at that. That's one we need to be aware of. Other repairs, Melissa could probably speak to those if we wanted her to, in terms of just some general maintenance items that should be done. I know we had Lori Byrne looking at that, and I don't know if she's got back a report with us yet, has she, Melissa? Do you have that? Okay. Yeah. Just outlining some things, and some of those are fairly major things that should be done to the, to the garage, to maintain that. And then there was always the thought that perhaps additional floor could be added to the garage to add parking. I talked to our current city engineer, and she tells me, no, tear it down and rebuild it, but. But anyway, that, just, just some thoughts about that. Parking's always, almost always an issue in Placerville, so some thoughts about some things that could be done. Questions on that one?
I don't, I probably should not even ask this question, but are the two redwood trees becoming a problem yet? Not yet?
I don't think so.
Okay. Because they will. Yeah, they're gonna, though. I mean, they're, if you look at them in that space, they're just about to the edge of the concrete there. And they'll, you know, the one benefit is they've been growing up to get to the sun, but they've obviously passed the top of the third floor some time ago. And when trees get up in the sun, they stop growing up, and they'll just start growing out. And it's one of the reasons why the redwood tree down the road here, the base keeps getting really wide because there's no incentive for it to grow up anymore, and they just start growing out. And I've got a feeling that's going to start being a problem in the not-too-distant view.
Question for, aside from the adding an additional level, is there any, any sense of what the ballpark figures are for all the other, you know, refurb, refurbishments, including potentially adding a, a elevator, which would make sense to maybe get more use out of the top floor as well?
To my knowledge, we have not put a number to that yet. We, we need to, we need to look at that, but we have not put a number to it, so. Did we? Other questions, comments on this one? Okay. All right. Now we're going to move into funding options. So first and foremost, what we would always look at is cutting expenditures. Other options, utility user tax, parcel tax, increasing our transient occupancy tax, a developer fee, and then right at the bottom of the list is a sales tax. So probably the least popular, but maybe not when you review it and take a look at it. So let, we'll go through each one of these. So in terms of cutting expenditures, our primary cost for our budget is personnel. 71% of our budget is personnel costs. And I want to have to say, that's, that's the general fund, but I, I think that's a good, a good measure of what, what we do. Our current level of personnel is still 12 and a half percent below what we were in 2007. So I think we've, we've done a good job of being efficient with the staffing that we have. We have done some other cost-cutting measures throughout the years. You know, again, primarily personnel, a few years ago, the start of the pandemic, we had a voluntary retirement program that we put together to cut costs, and that benefited us at that time. The negative to that is that men, other people had to pick up the slack where some of those people left, and we didn't fill some of those positions. Some of those positions we have now filled, but not all of them, so. I will say that we, I do believe there may be some savings that could be realized, but it would possibly require reducing services to get any measurable numbers out of reducing expenditures. And then the actual amount of savings, again, would not likely meet the desire, definitely, I don't, there's no way we could meet the requirement to get the money for a public safety building. But it could be a piece of the whole picture that we look at.
I have a, I know, we, we are going to talk about, well, it's, it's in here, a potential cost. I guess maybe just for the publics and even our own edification, if we're talking about raising money on an annual basis, how much of a hole on an annual basis do we need to fill? I mean, I know that we're talking, if we just want to build a nice place for these two guys, that's, what is that again? 38?
Or 43 million.
43 million bucks.
Yeah.
So is there an idea of what the annual, and, and don't quote us on this, by the way, these are rough numbers, but just to give us an idea of the hole we need to, we would need to fill every year, because that's what we're talking about.
So I'm going to run, run down to the end of my presentation, but you should have this in your, in your packet also, that spells it out. If we were to do a 40-year loan.
Yeah.
At 4%, which, based on the current rates you can get from.
Right.
The rural development program that we've looked at, which is probably about the best.
Right.
We would look at, be looking at annual payment of 1.4 million a year.
So 1.4 million?
Yeah, under that scenario.
That's just a, yeah, let, and, and it could be more, and probably won't be less, but could be more. But just to give everyone behind us here an idea of the hole we're talking about filling, thank you very much.
Cross me 1.4 million here, just for the public safety.
Just for the public safety million.
I understand.
I thought, I thought you were asking, what is, what does the hole look like in its entirety?
The hole, well, okay. I guess I could, I could, I gets, I guess I could say, the hole gets bigger. But at least, at least if we're talking about just the public safety building, and we're talking about revenue generation, then the folks here and now, is this thing being televised?
Yes, it is.
Oh, okay, hi. Then at least the folks that are listening in would have an idea of the kind of what we're talking about.
Yep. Yep. Okay. Any other questions, comments?
So, you don't have an idea about what the other hole looks like, when you talk about all the other items?
Well, if, if you look at, um, in the, in your packet, I prepared a spreadsheet that goes through and discusses some of those things and what those costs would be. Some of those require financing, some of them like the park maintenance and trail maintenance, I put in there just as an annual figure that go into that. And those are, those are just numbers I threw at that, there's not a lot of science that went behind that. Now, some of those, uh, the costs, uh, there was a little bit of thinking about what those would be and et cetera. But those, that spreadsheet was put together to show what potentially could be, under different scenarios. But again, remember, well, I'll wait till I get to discussion of the sales tax before I get to that, so, yeah. That spreadsheet is specifically kind of built on a potential se, uh, sales tax scenario, so. Okay? All right, let's, let's run through these other options. Uh, there, these others are gonna be fairly quick. Uh, a utility user tax is an option, that's a, a percent tax, it could be, uh, passed to go on, um, uh, utilities, everything from electricity to telephone to water and sewer, et cetera. You can add that percentage, and then it specifically goes to a general fund use. Um, or a specific use, if you define it that way, it could go that way. They're pretty difficult to pass, they haven't been very successful in other jurisdictions, uh, the past several years. Um, again, could affect your water and sewer rates if we apply it to that also. And, um, again, that one may be difficult to achieve the desired levels of revenues that you want to get out of it, so. Questions? Correct. It does require voter approval, yes.
She asked, will that have to be passed by the voters, thank you.
Okay. Um, next is a parcel tax. Again, this is a tax that would be applied to, through your property tax. Um, another one that is generally difficult to, to pass, um, really takes a lot of work. And one, one factor I put in here is that the only people that would pay for that is us who live here in the city, if we did it that way. And I'll point that distinguished from a sales tax, that's where it's different. Normally, from what I've seen in my experience, it's normally set at a, as a, a dollar value per hundred thousand value of your property. So, if you, your property was worth $300,000, and you had $30 per hundred thousand, as shown here, you'd be paying $90 a year. And I've seen those anywhere from, I've seen them like $30, I've seen them up to as high as a hundred or over a hundred dollars per hundred thousand. So that, they can vary depending on what, what they are, so. Questions on that one? Anybody? Sue has a question behind you. And yes, it requires voter approval.
That was one question, and I think it requires voter approval, and I think this is the one everybody hates.
It's not a real.
Unequivocally, yes. Hates.
All right, anybody else? Okay. Moving on, transient occupancy tax, this is one we already have, our rate is currently 10%. And rates throughout the state raised anywhere from eight percent up to, I've seen, 15%, I think is the highest I've seen. I believe South Lake Tahoe is 12. So, um, again, uh, requires voter approval, maybe not quite so difficult to, um, to pass. And the current revenues that we get each year are $252,000 a year. I put here 1% increase, yeah, it, I probably should've said one point increase, or 10%. So if you, I made this 11% instead of 10%, it would be a $25,000 a year increase that we receive, right Dave?
Uh, it'd be twenty-five, twenty-five, two thousand, a 1%.
If we went to 11% instead of 10%? No, it'd be 25,000, right? Because this is 10%, one-tenth of that is 25,000.
Correct. 10% would be 25,000.
Right, but if we, if we're currently 10% a night, so if we made it 11% a night, we would receive an additional 25,000 a year. Am I right, Dave? No? Like 2,500?
But you could make it 20%, and we're still not gonna get there.
Okay, anyway.
It's not enough.
Anyway, it's not 1.4 million a year, correct. As you can see, it's, it's a fairly small around, a small amount. Even if we were to double it and go to 20%, which we wouldn't do, we would only be, uh, we would be 500,000.
That's obviously what's been first, uh, so. I mean, if we were to increase our.
Right, that could be improved, yeah.
Could go up, but we're still talking. The, well, Airbnb and the, the other. Because we're getting 252,000 with nothing, basically. I mean, what do we have to get 250,000 from right now?
Yeah.
So, if we added another. I mean, between that and that other hotel actually.
I'm not sure.
Need to operate again. So, I mean, but that could maybe be pushed up, you know, maybe 400,000 max, you know, even if you passed the transit occupancy tax and a new, and new hotel rooms and Airbnb.
Yeah.
Probably half a million at the, like, at the ultimate, high, high end.
Yeah, that would be the high, and, and additional tax.
In addition, yeah, with new, that'd be like doubling what we currently, with our current bases.
Yeah. All right, other questions on that? Okay. Developer fee, um, that is one that I've seen in other agencies, they will have a fee charged on development for specific items, such as police facilities. I will say, when I was in the city of Patterson, we built a new city hall with, based on, with developer fees. Uh, developer fees and Melrose fees, I will add that to that, but, um, had a specific fee for many different items. The negative to that, it, it increases the cost of development, which we don't really wanna do when we wanna build, uh, houses. You have to be able to show a nexus between the fee and the growth that is happening, and it's very dependent on growth. So you're not gonna get a lot of revenue out of it unless you have a lot of growth. So you look at areas that have done this, such as Patterson, where I was, they had a huge amount of growth going on while I was there. And so they took advantage of that, so. Um, again, slow-growth area is difficult to achieve these, the desired revenues, so. Questions, comments on that one? So the last one we come to is, um, a potential sales tax, and just quickly, most of you know this, a percent, it's a percent applied to retail purchases. Currently, our city rate is 8.25%, which includes the Bradley Burns tax that everybody pays, which is 7.25%. Plus the three measures that we have, measure J is a quarter of a percent, measure H is a quarter of a percent, and measure L is a half a percent. Uh, measure L generated 2.9 million in 2223. I think if you look at my spreadsheet I have in here, I have a, set at 3 million, so even that is a little bit higher than what we actually got in 2223. Eldorado County, currently their sales tax rate is 7.25%, South, South Lake Tahoe is 8.75%. Uh, the median for Sacramento County and cities is 8.75%. And you do have a spreadsheet, or a sheet in your packet that shows, other areas shows Placer County and, and some others, uh, in there also, you can look at just for your information. So, um, voter approval of, is required of this one. Uh, if it's a general tax, which means you don't state what it's gonna be used for in your campaign, you can talk about what the needs are and et cetera, but you can't say this is what it's gonna be used for. On your ballot measure, it cannot be defined as this is what it was, will be used for. It just has to be a general tax. That requires a 51% vote. Um, a special tax, uh, requires two-thirds vote. Um, and on that one, you do say exactly what you're gonna use it for, you spell out an expenditure plan, and, and that's what you have to use it for. And that's what, um, measures J, H, and L are all special taxes rather than general taxes. So we have expenditure plans for those, which define what things they can be spent on, so. Generally, it's stated that the most effective time to do a sales tax is during a general election, general presidential election. And it requires a fairly extensive campaign if you want to pass a sales tax. I will state that when I, um, we passed, uh, measure H was passed in 2010, right before I got here, right Dave? May, in 2014, we attempted to pass measure I, some of you may require, recall that, that was a general tax. And, uh, it required 51% vote, I believe we lost by nine votes that year. It was, it was very close. But I wanna state also, one thing to remember with that one, is that, um, there was not really a committee that campaigned for that. Two years later, in 2016, we went for a special tax of measure L. And there was a citizen, um, campaign committee, if you will, and, and some council members that worked on that also, and pushed to get that passed. And I believe we were a little over 70% that it, uh, 76, thanks to. So it, it passed very well based on that, and that was for streets and pipes, so. Um, a couple other things I wanna point out in here. When we did measure, um, L, one of the things we did was talk to our sales tax people, um, HDL, who, uh, administers, looks at our, our records of what we get in sales tax. And they estimated around 70% of our sales tax actually comes from outside our city limits. Which means for us as voters who are voting for a new sales tax in Placerville, are only paying 30% of what we're receiving. So that's an interesting factor when you're talking about how you can improve things and the benefit you can get from, from, uh, a sales tax measure, is that it, you're really, you, you that are voting for it are only paying about 30% of the money that's coming in. The other 70% comes in from visitors, those from outside the county, et cetera. So, uh, pretty important factor. Again, and it talks about whether it's general or a special tax and what you have to do, uh, on those, so. Questions, comments on sales tax, this is probably the big one that has the most questions, so.
Question, so if you have a half a percent.
Yeah.
How much will it cost the average citizen chopping in? Well, that's what I just wanna point out, what, what would it cost compared to the other ones where you talk about.
We had that number in 2016, and I don't remember what it was, I haven't looked into that this year.
I think it was around $60 a year.
$60 a year.
Yeah.
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 Okay, Mickey Kaiserman, I was the head of that committee, and when, the citizens committee. And how we sold that is that if we didn't pass that special tax with an oversight committee, and it also had a term limit, uh, you were, we would've then charged everybody on their, uh, utility bill cost, and it would've just fixed the pipes and not the roads. So, you would've paid more and got less. You'd've paid the same and got less, so it was, it was not an easy sell, but we got 76% in vote. And so, when you're doing these special taxes, it's really, and Sue will tell you that too, a general tax is tough to pass anywhere. And we were one of the few people that passed that special tax at that time, because we had, we, was reused for specific funding. So, that's the key.
Well, while you have the microphone, Mickey, why don't you give us your thoughts on all of this?
Well, first of all, I didn't understand the, the first thing is, the $43 million cost of the facility, I put that in my financial calculator, and I came up with like, if we had 40 years at 4%, I came up with a 2.2 million a year, and you were saying, I think it was less. Was that because we were using grant funding to cover some of the costs?
Yeah, let me.
Okay, so, okay.
About that, yeah. Let me go down here to, whoop, went too far.
Yeah, so, yeah, I looked at the spreadsheet, so it wasn't for the whole 43 million that, that was with potential grant funding.
So, let me run through this real quick if I can. So, um, in your packet, you have a page that talks about the, let me find it here, the community facilities direct loan and grant program in California. That's part of the, um, federal Department of Agriculture Rural Development Program. And they have, and this defines on this page, I didn't put it up on the screen, but this defines potentially how you could get loans or grants, and what, what you could apply for. So, if you look on that page, I've highlighted in the number three on it, located in a rural community having a population of 20,000 or fewer, and the median household income of the proposed service area is below the higher of the poverty line, or 80% of the state metropolitan median household income. The state median, non, non-metropolitan median household income right now is, um, 83,800. We are at 68,640, which is 81.9%, just over that 80% threshold that they say. And under that threshold, you would be eligible for a 35% grant. And it says up to, so I'm assuming that perhaps we could get close to that 35% under that scenario. So what I did, Mickey, is you look at the 43 million, and then I assumed a potential grant of 35% under this scenario, uh, which takes off 15 million, you end up with 28,248 that needs to be financed. So, yeah, sorry about that, I should've mentioned that. So, the, what we talked about then, the, the number that would be needed for that 28 million is 1.4 million dollars a year. Okay? Questions, comments?
Question.
Um, Sue Rosman, measure H, measure L, measure L is bringing in about $3 million a year. So, and that's a half percent, so a half percent sales tax would cover our liability to pay back this grant almost double. If you're figuring 1.4 million dollars, so you maybe could put this down to a 20-year loan instead of a 40-year loan. And pay it off. Or if you wanted to, you take the 40 years to pay it off, then you've got some extra money.
So, a, as we mentioned, 2223, we got 2.9 million, almost 3 million of the half cent for measure L. So it's just under 3 million right now, what we currently receive. Um, I ran some other numbers. If, if you wanted to do, uh, 20 years, it would cost you 3.1 million a year to do that. So a little over that. If you did a 30-year, split between those, it's approximately 2.5 million a year. So just as an idea of what those other numbers would be for the public safety building, so.
Do we have other questions, comments from the public, absorbing all this, right?
I had a question specifically about the pension unfunded liability. Um, I remember in that conversation that Dave mentioned that there was an, uh, annual cost savings associated with that extra half-million-dollar payment that we made. Kind of as far as an ROI, what is our annual cost on that 23 million? And, um, if you remember that number, how much we're saving annually because of that half-million we paid, it might kinda help to inform this conversation, maybe we get a better ROI on paying down that unfunded liability as far, you know?
So, the question is, is, um, what is the return on investment for, uh, advancing $500,000? So, the saved interest is approximately $532,000 over a 20-year period for making that advanced payment of $500,000.
This really isn't a discussion about our unfunded liability. But that's an interesting situation, though, because that would, I think if you're talking about paying down a fixed debt, if that number never changed, 25 million bucks, only changed because of time. because of time, you know, it only changes because of time, then you'd say, okay, yeah, we could, we could pay that down. But if the market were to take a ginormous dump, that $500,000 could get sucked up really quick. I mean, it disappear, it evaporates almost. I mean, my personal feeling is, the state of California is not going to let every city in the state go out of business. You know, just as a policy thing. I just don't think that's ever going to happen. So they're going to be futzing around with this thing until it finally gets to a place over time where it's not a, it's less of an issue. I personally don't, I mean, I know we did it this year because it was already kind of in the budget and everything, but my personal feeling is, I doubt, I, I'm really sort of a little mixed on paying these things down. And I sure as heck wouldn't be selling bonds to pay it off because you turned a theoretic, I mean, that's a theory number up there in, in some respects. It's real. I mean, it's real. We really have that pension liability, but it's a theory number. If you were to pay that off in a bond, you have a real debt at that point, and that makes no sense to me. So I don't want to get too into unfunded liability discussions. We've discussed this and.
So, I mean, unfunded pension, personally, I agree with John Coleritie on that issue. I mean, I would have used the half a million dollars maybe to build that elevator, but I'm just, but we could discuss this for a long period of time. Because remember, this is the unfunded portion. The actual liability is way greater, and they're using a discount. I'll just give you two seconds on this. They're using a discounted cash flow that they don't achieve with the investment side. So you have the real, you have the real liability and the investment side, and the difference is the unfunded liability. And I could, if anyone wants to spend two or three hours with me, I will take you through it.
And I have, and it's fascinating.
My personal opinion would be to take the unfunded liability out of this entire discussion. That it's not worth our time. What we have real is the things we need to do for the city and the public safety building. The unfunded liability is theoretical. But I don't think, I don't think that we need to, to fund it with people's taxes. I just, I disagree. I would not vote for it if it goes to that.
That's a number.
I have a question for Chief Cordero. Chief, any other, any thoughts? I mean, I don't know if there's any other funding streams available to fire that might not be something that we've looked at, or is there any other, anything else out there that would maybe easier for fire authority versus the municipality?
Actually, our, our funding mechanisms are pretty limited. We don't have access to things like sales tax. We do have development impact fees are in place on new development. We're working on our community facility district, but again, that's on new development. We did make an attempt back in 2019, 2020 on Measure B, which is a parcel tax, which we got 37%. So that's, that's really kind of our limitations. It's pretty, pretty narrow window for us to raise additional revenue.
Yeah. And I thank, thank you, chief. And I, I did know that. I wanted to just kind of get it on the record because it is a, I mean, we're in a tough spot. I mean, and to your point, I mean, the last, when you all went out for the tax measure, it wasn't as if wildfires were just sort of a theoretical thing at the time, and yet, you know, we still were only at 37% for that tax measure. So we face an uphill battle for any tax measure going forward. And I'll give you, I mean, kind of the business I work in, and I mean, even for Measure A in Sacramento County that went down the last cycle, they, they repolled this time around for this presidential cycle, and you don't see another Measure A on the ballot in Sacramento in 2024 because the appetite's just not there. And I can tell you that the appetite in Sacramento County is going to be in, you know, just on the natural, have a greater appetite for passing a potential sales tax measure. So I personally don't think 2024 is the year to try to go out for a sales tax measure because the worst thing, because, and I've seen this, is that when you, when you fail on a tax measure, it's just like anything else, it's harder to come back the next time around and convince them again. So you want to get it right the first time if you can, if you're going to go out and do it. So I know it probably puts us out to 2028 in terms of if you wanted to do a general sales tax measure, but I just don't see a lot of appetite there in 2024.
Another question behind you, Mayor.
Okay. I'm just curious, is there any cost recovery to selling the current or renting out the current fire and police buildings that could help cover, to build the new building?
That's a factor we've looked a little bit at, potentially even selling those for some other use that might be available. We haven't got into the detail on that. So I know that Chief Wren wants to make the Firehouse Restaurant on the new fire station, But, but there is some potential for some revenue from those, those facilities. Not sure what they would be, what, you know, could happen with those, so we don't have really cost or revenue in mind for those. But, good point. Got one more.
This is the first time that I've heard any discussion about this, so my question might be stupid. But I'm wondering, are you saying that the city of Placerville is responsible for 59% of the cost of the facility and that the fire district is responsible for 41%?
Let me, let me put it this way. The breakdown that they did in the study showed 59% of the building would be used for police and 41% for fire. Our assumption that we're going into this, this, this new facility would serve police and fire for both, for the entire city. And that, the initial assumption is that we would work on revenue solutions to fund the entire facility. So even though we're talking about the city police department and a county fire district. But there could be more discussion on that. But that, that's the assumption that we've used in this report.
It's, that sounds kind of odd to me, especially since I was on the council when the council voted to form the district, and I was the only person who voted no because I wanted the city to keep its own fire department. And then it ended up that the state took away property tax and, and we were not allowed to make any cuts in the fire department. And anyway, and to me, it just seems that the responsibility of that building should not strictly be the city's.
I just want to mention that 30% of that 41% is the city, though, in services for the city. So it's, it's not 59% for the city, 41% not for the city. Part of that 41% is still part of the city's responsibility. Other questions, comments? Public, what do you think about all of these things?
I'll, I'll pay the special sales tax for the public safety building.
How about anybody else interested to hear what you have to say?
So when we went to get the citizens behind Measure L, we met, we, we spent a lot of time educating everyone in the city on that measure, on that tax. And it was a special tax with an oversight committee, and it sunsetted. And we met every week for nine months. It was two city council members and five other citizens, and we built a strategy of educating everyone on this. And it took a lot of effort. We went from door to door, we went to every single club, and it's, it's a lot of work. And, and the only reason it passed is because it was a special tax and we could demonstrate what the savings would be because it was going to be paid for by outside the city residents, the people that do visit our city and use the roads and water and sewer lines here. So that's all I'm going to say. It takes a lot of work and education to pass that tax. And it's, and I don't think a general tax will pass at all. Because what happens with a general tax is, yeah, it goes into the city coffers, and then all you people that are city councilmen are gone years later and say, hey, maybe we should do this or do that with those funds. And you need to have it specifically set up as a special tax if you're going to fund this public safety building.
Yeah. I, I agree with Mickey on that. The, the general, I mean, we only did lose by like nine votes, so I mean, we don't want, it wasn't a blowout. But you can introduce too much doubt. And the naysayers will just come in and say, well, you know, they'll use it to put gargoyles on City Hall or something like that. And, and, and it just gets into the bloodstream of the, of the community. And I think if you're very specific, you have a much better chance of, of passing a special tax. If you're very specific and very, God, I hate to use transparent about what you're using the money for. You specifically raised the money, specifically do it. And we shouldn't, I mean, none of the other, the other thing too is, one of the things we discovered in Measure L is the, none of those other forms of taxation raise enough money. I mean, they just don't, unless you start like talking about huge parcel taxes or huge utili, I mean, they just don't. The only one that is in, comes even close is a sales tax. And just for this room and for the future, if, if in fact this is the way we were to go, there are studies and studies and studies that show that percent or even a percent and a half difference in sales tax across jurisdictional boundaries don't do anything. They don't mean anything. The only places where you see large movements of people is plays in states, sales tax, no sales tax. And even there, you don't see a lot of movement because people typically just buy things where they are. They buy things where they are. And if the things are there, they're not going to sit there and go, well, I can save a half a percent or a quarter of a percent on their sales tax. They don't, that just has been demonstrated over and over and over again. Yeah. Fine. I mean, I wouldn't, oh, I'm sorry.
One of the things that happened when we were doing Measure L was I met a lady, just one of, one of the people I met in Rayleigh's, and she said, why should I vote for this thing? And I said, so that everybody who flushes in Placerville pays in Placerville. And she said, oh, I'm going to vote for it then.
Okay. Since we're talking about this. In some respects, the, the, the public, the public, I don't want to get into the other stuff because that can be done, and I, let's talk about that at some point here shortly. But one thing about the public safety issues are, and it's a similar situation to the road, especially the roads in town, when, for Measure L, the road component, was the, the amount of people that come in and out of the town every day, the tentative, as we've all heard, the population nearly doubles. It's mostly because we're, a lot of employers here in town, but also people come here to, to buy things. Thus the 70%. And that is a wear and tear that goes beyond just the people living here. We live with the wear and tear, but it's made and frequently from folks that just come in and tear things up. And in some respects, the police and fire department have the same kind of footprint. They, the fire, the, the police department just doesn't address people that live in, they don't come to you and say, do you live in town? Oh, well, then we'll help you. They don't do that. They, they just help. And a lot of the people they help don't live anywhere near here, or they live outside the town. And the same with the fire department. Obviously, the fire department has a much bigger footprint than the city limits of Placerville. It goes well beyond that. And so this is a way of, of raising money in a way that, A, gets paid mostly by people that come into the community, but also addresses the impacts of the people that come into the, for the community. And I will, I don't want to disagree with, with Ms. Lishman because that would be dangerous, but, but I don't really want to make this about the percentages of who's doing what with whom. We have a fire department, we have a police department, they need a building. Yes, the fire, the footprint of the fire department is obviously much larger than, than the city, but so is the footprint of our police department as well. And so I would just like to focus on getting a facility for these two very fine institutions. And other things.
I think of all the options, we probably can agree that the sales tax is probably the best option in order to get the money that we need to do this. So my question to the public is, who supports this? Who doesn't support this? David support this? Yes. Yes. No, I don't know, but this is a start, right? I have you here as a captive audience now. It, it's a start to see. I mean, I mean. Yes, yes. Sue?
The best possible.
Mickey?
It is, but it's really important. When, when we went with this feasibility study, we thought, hey, maybe we could get, because it was joint fire and, and police, we thought we could get funding to cover the whole cost of that, I thought. That was the premise upfront when we went for that big feasibility study that we both contributed funds towards. So unless the environments change and we only think we can get 35%, that's one thing. But I think it's really important to get the grant funding in place, and the fire department's doing its part in getting some grant funding. So we need to see where that is and then see what the sales tax measure would be. And I would recommend that that sales tax go for what the useful life of the building is, whatever that, with the oversight committee, make sure the funds go in there, and it sunsets, then we pay for the building, whatever that percentage would be.
Thank you. I actually agree with John.
I agree with, oh, really?
Well, you'll have to wait to see what I agree with you on.
I have another question. Are you kind of putting all of the other ideas on hold and just focusing on this for this meeting? I'm very interested in the concept that has to do with Town Hall, not just because the building's in really bad shape, but because there is a need for a community center. And Friends of Seniors is trying to work with the foundation to start some kind of a capital campaign with the county to build a new senior center. And so to me, I mean, this has been something I've thought about for a long time, how great it would be to have a facility that was a county-city one, where the city had a gym and there was a senior center. So that's just my dream, and I have to mention it because it was on the list.
Great. Anybody else?
Mayor, no? If I may. So getting back to the TOT tax projection, I sidebared with Mr. Morrison. So a one percentage point increase in your TOT would represent $25,000 in growth revenue. But I misinterpreted it as 1%. So anyway, I apologize for the confusion.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. It still wouldn't get us there. There, there's the bottom line. I mean, if we raised it 10, if we doubled it and went from 10% to 20%, we're only talking about another quarter million dollars a year. It's not going to get us close to what we need to do.
So I guess, you know, kind of my thoughts on this, obviously, a sales tax is the most likely, you know, successful scenario here, but I don't think we have time to run a successful campaign for one for 2024. I just don't think we have the time to get folks on board and educate and, and do all of that. I also think, you know, a special tax is very clear what it's going for, which makes it quite easy, or not easy, but it makes it easier to get the public on board with this is what we're going to use it for than a general tax that we can use for whatever we would like. So I do think that's something to consider and sort of where this goes, but I don't think this year is the year, just, I don't think we have time to run a campaign that would, it would pass this year.
I was going to agree with you. You were, were you excited about? No. Well, I, I agree that, that a special tax is, is really the only way to go. I mean, that's, that's where we found the most success. People are accountable, and I kind of feel the same way. I don't want to vote for a general tax, not knowing who the future city council is going to be and what their priorities are going to be and spend that money. is going to be and what their priorities are going to be and spend that money. What I was going to agree with you about, though, was in terms of trying to split this up of percentages and fire department, I mean, 70% of the money is coming from out of the city. And I don't think it's horrible that we help outside of the city. I mean, they're bringing a million dollars to the table to buy the property. There's a lot of investment in there. I would support just a special tax to build those buildings for our communities and not nitpick at all those little details.
And I'd like to ask, where did that million dollars come from?
Senator Alvarado Gill led the charge for that. She's being recognized on February 15th at the IDO meeting at 14:00 hours at 2:00 p.m. We will be there to recognize her.
Recognize her, thank you. The reason I bring that up is a sore subject for anybody that happens to be in District whatever. Which district is this district? Four or one? Three? Three? Congressional District, three? I think we should write a very official, very nice letter to our congressman requesting that he support us through some sort of legislative action and an earmark for this property because I want that on the record.
I would agree because I, my comments I was going to make is, you know, unfortunately, our congressman doesn't support earmarks, which would be fine if there was no earmarks to be had.
Right.
And so you could actually stand on ground that actually made sense. That being said, we do have two U.S. senators.
Yes.
And I think it's incumbent that we work with our U.S. senators to try to get something passed. I mean, I wanted to do this when Senator Feinstein was still here. I just never got around to it. I mean, because she had a special place in her heart for Lake Tahoe. I mean, there was just, there was a connection to Eldorado County for Senator Feinstein at the time. But I do think that there's opportunities through the Senate offices to still get something done. And we're not going to see any, it's not likely we will see any budget augmentations from the state budget, knowing where we're at for at least a few cycles, budget cycles. But there are still federal, on the federal side, there are still. I mean, regardless of what happens in the next cycle of who runs the House or the Senate, I don't see those going away. So I do think there are opportunities there.
And if, and it doesn't have to be a lot of money. A little bit here, a little bit there.
Yeah.
And gets the price down. I, I mean, I work, in my professional life, I work with congressmen that are so conservative, they would make, they would make this guy look like a New Dealer. And they go out and get money for their communities. And they are about as conservative as they get. And they do it. And McClintock won't. Well, or you couldn't, you cannot find, I'll guarantee you, LaMalfa's more conservative than McClintock by a lot. And he gets money for his district. I work with his staff, and we get money for his district. I think we should write a very nice letter to our congressman and ask him to do this. He seems to have a thing about us and our police department and naming buildings, so.
Councilmember Yarborough, we haven't heard where you stand on everything.
Taking it all in.
Taking it all in. So if we say that we're not going to do a sales tax and ask this time, we're looking at four years away?
That's an interesting question because I talked to Cleve about this a little bit. And it has to do with voting numbers and how, people that vote in the general, in the presidentials and people that vote in the off term. But, you know, voting, I don't know, what is the voting numbers? How, do they go down substantially in midterms as opposed to the?
They do. I mean, you're talking maybe over 20%.
Really? Okay, I wasn't.
Presidential. Plus, I think, I mean, we all know that 2024 is likely a rematch presidential election for all intents and purposes.
That's where my money is.
2028 is going to be, regardless of whatever happens in 2020, 2024, 2028 is going to be different just by constitutional limits.
That's true.
So I think you're going to have a much different political setting as well, where we could just get lost in the shuffle, if you will, for a lot of other things going on in 2024. So pragmatically, I mean, I would support, if it comes up, and that's what people decide to do, you know, it's probably the best, it's the best thing for the city. I don't know if it's the best timing.
Okay.
Do we have more public comment? No? I just want to make sure everybody gets to talk.
How long do we want to wait? And how long do we want to put up with the buildings that we have?
My recommendation, and I'll say it again, is if we can show that we've got 30, 40, 50% of this building covered by grants, I think we could pass the sales tax measure. Not this, well, you're not going to get it that fast. As fast as you can get that commitment, then I would go and explain it to the citizens. Yeah, any, any year. If we could show that we've gotten $20 million of it and it's only going to cost people, you know, something maybe $10 a month, I think we can show it. We just, we could run the numbers. It could work out. But you got to show that you got that, that's the big selling point. Hey, when we did Measure L, we also, remember, we said, hey, we're going to be able to get matching funds. We were going to be able to, we said we were going to leverage it. And in the marketing campaign we put out every year, we showed that how much we've collected in matching and funds from outside parties. So that's really critical, that we could show that to the citizens that we're getting the feds, the state, somebody to contribute money. We can show, hey, we got the million dollars from the state. We got 20 million from the feds. Once we put that together, I think we have a good shot of passing a special tax. That'd be my recommendation. Get the commitment for the funding, and then let's send out a special tax. And I'm not saying I'm going to head that committee yet.
No, but I am looking at the committee members. So, you know, it does take a commitment from people. Is it possible to get those grant funding and then do the sales tax measure? I think that's what Mickey is trying to say.
We have representatives that we can meet with and see what kind of commitment we can get from them. So, yeah. And I just want to mention, too, I agree with all you're talking about, whether or not 2024 works. I will admit, the reason I tried to push this as early as I could this year was if you do want to do 2024, we should be walking out of this room with a committee person that says, I'm going to take this on because it is critical that we move today. So.
Okay. Mickey's saying we need a commitment of funding first.
I think to get the ducks lined up, and especially if you're going to go after congressional and senatorial stuff and all of that, then you're going to get into their cycle.
She can't hear me, but now she can. I think that in order, about the grant funding is obviously, that's accurate. And then if you're going to start juicing senators and congressmen and people at this, you know, elected officials above this level, that's going to take time. That's going to take some work. That's going to take some stuff. And I don't think nine months is nearly long enough. So, but I would not be against going for 2026. I think that that is a doable thing.
Yeah, I mean, because we're talking even less time than that because by, we'd have to put it on the ballot by, what, May? Or whenever the, I mean, we're talking months. We'd have like three or four months to really get everything in place.
Yeah, I mean, I also would not be opposed to 2026, particularly if we had grant funding and other things in place to help sell it to our public. So I don't think, just because it's a gubernatorial and there's usually less election turnout, that should be a reason not to proceed that year.
All right, Cleve, so a quick question. So with the funding part of it, the grant funding part of it, or the loan part of it, getting the 35%, getting the pre-qualification for that, what do you think that would take timeline-wise?
Gosh, I don't know for sure. I would say two or three months at least to get to them and get. And I'm not sure what sort of commitment they would give us, but they would probably look at these parameters and say, yes, you would fall in this parameter.
Okay, so, yeah, that's kind of what I'm getting at is because I deal with this kind of type of setup for funding, for standard stuff, just making sure that we are meeting that 80% AMI and we can fall into that 35%. Or are we above that 80% and closer to the 90%? And are we going to get 15% instead of 35%? So if we can get those numbers narrowed down, at least we can have that information to go to the public with and at least at that point, have some sort of for sure way of putting a committee together to get this going. So, I mean, if we can get this going six months from now, that gives us a year and a half to 2026 to really push to get this funded.
Questions, comments, discussion? Anyone?
You know, one other thing, and we were just sidebaring a little bit, but one thing that we didn't talk to here, and it's, you know, it's an option for a revenue stream, which is annexation, is growing the city beyond where we're at because, I mean, we're confined, I mean, to what our sales tax base can actually do for us. The only way to actually increase that sales tax rate is to grow. And so that is another option, which is, you know, the annexation model, whether that's housing, you know, brick and mortar buildings. But it is another potential source.
Yeah, the.
It's also long-term.
It's a long-term solution. Plus, the challenges with revenue, I mean, I know, I know five, I know three things about most things. I know five things about annexation, but they're not much, you know? And that is when you annex land into your, into your area, there's going to be a revenue sharing agreement with the county. And it's usually like, they, you know, at the beginning, they're still getting this much, and then it winnows its way down. And you negotiate it until at some point enough in the future, they're out, you're in. But you have to negotiate that. So it, A, it's a long-term solution. And B, even the revenue is, it's a challenging thing because if you're just talking about the land around the city that isn't commercial, you're talking about, say, property tax negotiation. And we only get 4% of the property taxes in the city. And so anyway, it's a long-term solution. There'd be, to be a thing, and the fruits of it would not be happening for some time. So I think it's a legitimate question, but it's definitely a long-term solution.
Chime in real quick. It is a long-term solution, but it's an immediate impact on city, current city resources. So we grab land, which we need. We obviously need that expansion because the city is just, we see it, all buildable space has been built on just about, unless, you know, builders get creative. But once we expand, there is now an immediate need for those resources so that, we're talking more police officers, we're talking more public's work, works personnel. So, yeah, those things are things that we've thought about at the, at the department head level of how to keep up with that expansion and what it would look like. So.
So then. Yep.
Does the city still have a lobbyist in Washington, D.C.?
Yeah. No, we do not. Sue.
I remember the last time the city went out to annex some land around us and the public went nuts, and they said, no way.
Times have changed.
I think that was the Islands, too. That was part of that conversation, I remember. So it kind of sounds like people are of the thought of maybe considering a sales tax for 2026. My question to you is, is there any thought about raising the TOT tax for smaller projects and doing things around town? That's if you only go 1%. If you go 5%, that could be $125,000.
If you doubled it, it would be $250,000.
Exactly.
Well, I would be interested in that. I mean, if, if the interest rates ever come down and we actually get another hotel and we look at our, whatever Airbnb's, which is probably somewhat de minimis, but, but I didn't actually think we got $250,000 from a very, very scant, you know, amount of rooms that are actually available today.
Maybe we just need, we need more information.
So, I mean, I would be interested to look at it. But is that a 50 plus one general vote?
Forty vote, yep.
So the, my, the purpose of TOT is to help a couple of things. One is to promote the city so that more tourists come into town. And if you're using it for other things, that's, I think, generally away from what it's intended use is. And, and the city also was going to give TOT to whoever built this first hotel back as a revenue stream so they could build a hotel, which we haven't gotten built yet. So, I mean, we could get into a whole discussion about more rooms and Airbnbs and all that, but it's not a big number. I don't know. You could raise it, but you can't raise it to, you want to be competitive with other cities. But usually, the funds are used for promoting the city.
Eldorado County just gave a boatload of TOT to the Meeks Bay Fire Department. So apparently, you can give it to anybody who wants.
What is the county's rate for TOT? And also, TOT IC, TOT also needing to be used for the impacts of tourism?
Do we know what the county TOT rate is?
I think they're 10 also.
They're 10. Any more questions or comments from the public? Okay. Staff? Council? Okay. Did you get the information you were looking for?
We got some good information. And so we'll go back and regroup and talk about, you know, where, how we can move forward and present some things for formal action by the council going forward. So, yeah, unless, I don't know, any staff, any other questions, staff on this? I think we're, I think we're good. Thank you for meeting. I know it's an extra meeting for the month, but felt like this was an important issue that we needed to start the discussion and move forward with it. So, thank you.
I'll add one, I'll add one more thing from my end, too, for the public. And because there's always, you know, there's often criticism of overspending or misspending. And I would welcome any thoughts on any cuts that we could do as a city to help make up the cost to build our public safety or do any of these other things. So if anyone has ideas that thinks that we're maybe overspending somewhere, certainly send me an email or call me. I'd like to see them. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll be having that budget discussion in May.
I just want to remind everybody that tomorrow night at 7 o'clock in this room, rain or shine, is the League of Women Voters Candidate Forum for District Three Supervisor.
And that is our district. So with that, we will adjourn this meeting at 5:28. Thanks, everyone, for coming.